Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present. Please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little bit of quick business before we get to some of our festivities tonight. We have a motion for the executive minutes of October 27, 2014.
So moved, second.
Already discussed, roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of October 27, 2014.
So moved. Alright, sorry.
Any discussion?
We'll take turns.
Roll call, vote.
Your turn.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the executive minutes of November 13.
So moved, second.
Already discussed, roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion on the special minutes of the meeting of November 13, 2014, special meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll move, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. It's great to see a nice, big audience out there. And what I'd like to start off with is by calling in Ranson Solomon from sophomore at Madison High School to deliver a message for us.
This is an article from the Madison Weekly Eagle, published on Friday, December 27, 1889, titled "A Borough Government." It is an editorial by the Madison Eagle editor Fred Barton. "Three hundred and eight legal voters rejoice with news that on Tuesday they were on the side of the majority in deciding the question of a borough government for Madison, while but one hundred and forty-five intervals regret that they were in the minority. It was a great day for Madison, and upon the results depended on the success or failure of the future growth and prosperity of this beautiful and helpful city. Had the question been decided in the negative, all ambition to increase the facilities of the city, or make it an inducement for the city people to come and buy property, and thus benefit themselves as well as those who live here, would have remained in its present dormant condition. Too long already have we tarried. Summit is making rapid strides, and in a few years more would leave us so far in the rear that nothing could be done to regain the lost ground. That lethargic or comatose feeling, which has for a century past been so deceptive and injurious to the growth and prosperity of Madison, has been supplanted by a healthy, vigorous, and active resolve to be abreast of the times, to make the city of Madison a pleasant and cheerful residing place. Under the present condition of affairs, how could we expect to advance? Look at our sidewalks, our roads, the dark and uninviting appearance of Main Street, and the numerous other unpleasant sights which meet the gaze of the stranger and would-be purchaser of property. Their things all can be changed and without an increase in tax. The present amount of tax levied for road and sidewalks is sufficient, indeed too large a sum. The method of caring for them and using the money judiciously and wisely is the great trouble. We believe a borough government for Madison will prove the greatest boon to our people that could possibly be thought of. And now that question has been favorably decided, let us proceed to elect a mayor and six members of the common council. This needs careful action. A mayor should be a man of judgment, honest, conscientious, and progressive. The councilmen should be freeholders, who realize and know the full value of a dollar, and not too anxious to proceed in the works of regeneration without careful forethought. They should be representative men, who share the burdens of taxation and consequently have the interests of the fellow citizens at heart. A false step now may prove a serious matter. However, with the large number of capable and efficient citizens, there is ample material to choose from." Thank you."
And just to clarify the editorial of 125 years ago, to remind everyone that women had not been given the right to vote yet, so hence the emphasis on an honest man and six men to serve the council. We have come a long ways and more ways than one. I want to, before I go into my comments, just make sure, because I always hate to forget some thank yous, but hopefully, if you haven't had a chance already, you take advantage of looking at some of the artifacts that are out in the hallway right now. There's some great memorabilia of the founding of Madison, not to mention some great cupcakes, keep them separated as you go out there, but I want to thank the Madison Historical Society for setting all that up, and also I want to thank the, there's some members of the Downtown Development Commission in the audience for working throughout the year and making Madison 125th Anniversary a great celebration. And we, some of those included, you know, many special events, commemorative flags that were in downtown Madison, the Flat Madison Summer Project, we saw pictures from all over the world of Flat Madison, and then there was also the great special tab section in Madison Eagle that gave us a great history of our heritage. And as we celebrate our 125th Anniversary, you know, it was back in the late 1800s, Madison was a part of Chatham Township. To show that there's no hard feelings, and we'll be calling them up shortly, Mayor Kevin Sullivan from Chatham Township is here, so we are working very well together even though we had to break away 125 years ago. In that editorial, I heard about the great downtown we already had, driven by the train stop on the Delaware Lac None and Western, and we had our own thoughts on how we should govern. In a way, we were that young adult, ready to move from home, but we weren't going to move anywhere. So, the main reason for leaving Chatham was so the residents could expand the electric street lighting system. You heard the comments about the downtown that needed lighting. Can you imagine a downtown that this time of year would shut down at 3:30 in the afternoon? I can understand why they wanted that. And they wanted to start at water utility, as you look at the history of New Jersey, 508 municipalities, somewhere around, 565, thank you, that many of them came out from creating their own water utility. And as Mayor Albright said in his first address, "The increasing traffic upon our public streets tend to increase the demand for more sprinkling to be done in the dusty seasons." Another challenge you don't think about right now, but here we are, trying to create a water utility to keep the dust down on Main Street. "Without the water utility," Mayor Albright said, "all reference to having any fire protection by water is now entirely out of place, protecting our properties." The goal of our elected officials hasn't changed over 125 years. Basically, as we do today, we did 125 years ago. Serve the residents of Madison, making sure the borough provides our residents with the very best in services, roads, and infrastructure. Basically, make sure the water is running and the lights are on. A driving force in 1889 was a water utility that could be used to keep, again, the dust down on our streets, but now it's through capital reinvestment. It has shifted from just a little dust to making sure we are paving our roads, maintaining our valuable water and electric utilities. So basically, even though it's shifted on from dust to paving, what Madison wants is high services, and 125 years, that is still strong. Back in 19, back in 1889, Mayor Albright told the council in following words, which still ring today, "Water, lights, and streets are thus the most important subjects in which you will have to deal." And if you stayed tonight for the budget presentation, and you were here for electric rates discussion, you can see again the theme, 125 years later, we are still right where we were, in this great town. So from Mayor Albright to the mayors in this room, Mayor Gary Ruckelshaus, Mayor Jack Dunn, Mayor Woody Kirkuslogger, Mayor Maryanna Holden, and Mayor Capen wanted to be here but sent his regrets. Madison has a deep history of dedicated leadership, and we should be very proud of where this town is today. I think our, Mayor Albright and his council would be very proud of where we are today. So, we are now going to do a little celebration, and I would like to have all the mayors in the audience, please come up here, and Mayor Sullivan, please join us also.
By service.
How many mayors does it take to figure out? Yeah, we'll just, where's our, yeah, where's our wireless?
Jim has it.
Kids are going to come in here, and we have a little presentation first.
We need the fire department.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Madison. Happy birthday to you.
And just as introductions, we're about to read the proclamation, but Mayor Kevin Sullivan, Mayor Gary Ruckelshaus, Mayor Woody Kirkuslogger, Mayor Conley, Mayor Jack Dunn, Mayor Maryanna Holden.
I just want to say thank you for inviting me. I'm sure there were many reasons why you left, you know, we just celebrated Thanksgiving, and families sometimes have issues, but I'm sure it was with good reason. We're sorry to see you go, I suppose, 125 years ago, but we look at you as first cousins, so, and friends and neighbors. You have a rich history, for sure, over those 125 years, none the least of which is this great field hockey team which is here tonight, and I know that because my daughter plays field hockey. I'm very aware of their skills and talents, but congratulations to you all, that is another great tradition here in Madison that has certainly been a part of it and building. But congratulations on 125 years and well done.
What we have is a proclamation. We will share reading off, because I've pointed out recently that mayors get paid by the number of whereas, as you say, and that is our pension also, so when you step down as mayor, you still get paid. So I'm going to start this with Mayor Ruckelshaus, and we're going to go through in chronological order as mayors, and I ask them to also, if they want to add their own whereas as to why they were proud to be a mayor of Madison, so.
Thank you. Proclamation of the Borough of Madison in recognition of the 125th Anniversary of Madison, New Jersey. Whereas Madison, a borough located in Morris County in the state of New Jersey, was incorporated on December 27, 1889, and adopted the borough form of government, and whereas in 1776, the cluster of homes along Ridgedale Avenue and Kings Road, also known as Bottle Hill, named for a village tavern, and during the Revolutionary War, a number of officers were garrisoned in the homes of Bottle Hill residents, namely the Millers and the Sayers, whose homes still stand on Ridgedale Avenue today. Now I do my whereas. I'd like to say, whereas, there are five mayors here tonight, there's one that couldn't make it, Mayor Capen. We all worked very hard, but there were thirty-some other mayors that went before us, and they are the ones that built this town. All we did was take care of it for a few years and try to make it as good a town as we possibly can. So I will now proclaim, am I allowed to do that? Madison is the best town in the state of New Jersey to live in and bring up a family.
My arms are not long enough. Whereas in 1809, the Madison Academy was built in an elaborate building on the corner of Park and Ridgedale Avenues, where children of the community continued to be educated for 72 years, and whereas in 1825, a new Presbyterian Church building on Main Street, housing the first Presbyterian Church of the Township of Chatham, was dedicated. In 1846, it became known as the Presbyterian Church of Madison, and now it's my turn for a whereas? Okay. Whereas, I was elected and honored to serve six years as a councilman and four years as mayor, and being a fourth-generation Madisonian, whereas I served with, it was a great privilege, believe me, to serve as a mayor and councilman in this municipality. I have a large family, and they all still live in town. Thank you.
Whereas in 1834, in recognition of the fourth president and the desire of the local temperance movement, the village's name was changed from Bottle Hill to Madison. Whereas in 1837, the Morrison Essex Railroad came to Madison from Newark, changing the village forever. At first, two horses pulled a small car over a single track line, but shortly after completion, a tiny stream locomotive provided the powerful one-passenger car and one freight car twice a day, and it hasn't gone up much since then. I love the New Jersey Transit Line, don't take me wrong.
Want to do, yep?
My whereas would relate to my interest before, during, and after my time as mayor. Whereas arts, education, innovation, and history are important elements of Madison's community culture, I now proclaim Madison as a leader in those areas, and may it live forever.
And they finally got around to electing a female mayor, although it was a second one. Whereas in 1856, the first greenhouse began operating when Alfred M. Treadwell built several greenhouses on his estate. For over a century, Madison has been known as the Rose City, and whereas, in 1866, Drew University was founded as the Drew Theological Seminary by the Methodist Episcopal Church with help from Daniel Drew, who donated part of the former William Gibbons estate to the church. The Gibbons Mansion was renamed Mead Hall after Drew's wife, Roxanna Mead. And I was very privileged to have served ten years on the council under these three gentlemen, and I also served with Mr. Conley when he was on the council, and four years as mayor. And during that time, Mayor Ruckelhaus championed historic preservation, which restored the train station. Mayor Kirkuslogger gave us the Rose Net, we were the first community with our own fiber-optic network. Mayor Dunn was great in chronicling the service of the many veterans in this town and those who gave their lives, writing a wonderful book called Always With Us, and he still works to keep that memory alive in their, what they have given for this community. And for myself, I am very proud to have worked on the restoration of this building, and also to have added 60 acres of recreational space to the town.
I don't know what to do. Whereas in 1889, a special election ordered by Judge Francis Child was held on December 24, 1889. Can you imagine voting on Christmas Eve now? At a store building on Main Street, residents voted to secede from Chatham Township so that Madison could have a municipal water supply utility. James P. Albright served as the first mayor, continuing in that capacity for 15 years. The water plant was built in 1891 on Station Road, within five light utilities were self-supporting. And my whereas, whereas during my term as mayor, which is still going on, I am most proud on how, though 125 years ago, after becoming independent, we lead the way with working with our neighbors. So now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the mayors at my side and the mayors that preceded us, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize 125th Anniversary of the Borough, urge all citizens to celebrate this momentous occasion.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming, Gary.
Mayors pointed out, one of the great things on the road now is, he can leave.
Good to see you, love it. Yep, you're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, mayors, come on back here. Madison mayors. Roses for the Rose City mayors. I think another thing the mayors would point out, that without the borough staff on your side, mayors would be forgetting a lot of things, so I'm glad, thank you, Jim. I think we have the DDC in the audience, any members of the DDC, please come forward. John, come up and join me.
Pat's coming.
And Pat, right, yes, it's your.
Lisa's out there.
Lisa Ellis is out there, come on up here. And Laura, you come and join us.
That's really funny.
So if you, right in front of me is announcing our employee of the month for December, and regretfully, it is her last month to be employee of the month because she is leaving us, but she certainly has set the stage to be the employee of many months. And so on behalf of the DDC and all our residents of Madison, we want to recognize you for your excellent work you've put in for the DDC. In recognition to Laura, this to the Downtown Development Commission, let's get the Cole family right on up here. And we have another. Whereas Laura served as program director for the Borough of Madison Downtown Development Commission for four years, and whereas throughout her tenure, Laura conscientiously and tirelessly performed her duties as DDC program director by giving thoughtful consideration, by taking action on virtually any idea which was the Borough of Madison. And whereas, the Downtown Development Commission wishes to publicly pay tribute and to thank Laura Cole for her selfless, outstanding, and meritorious service, not only to Downtown Development Commission, but the entire Madison community. And whereas Laura devotedly and absolutely performed all required, attending an immeasurable number of meetings, coordinating countless events and programs, and creatively responding to innumerable questions and emails from commissioners, borough staff, vendors, business owners, and residents, Laura always gave thoughtful consideration to the interests and concerns of the Downtown Development Commission and the Borough of Madison. And whereas the commissioners of the Downtown Development Commission consider Laura Cole to be an extraordinary person, sincerely extend their best wishes to Laura for her continued happiness and good health in all her future endeavors. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body and the Downtown Development Commission, do hereby commend and thank Laura Cole for extraordinary years of service to the Downtown Development Commission and the Borough of Madison. Thank you, Laura, for everything. On the spot, would you like to say anything?
I know.
We're going to put that in front of Laura's house.
I'm going to miss you.
Throughout the 125 years of the history of Madison, we, one of the things we have seen is success after success, and what we have to do is always recognize people that perform above and beyond and achieve victories, now you can tell I'm a free-flowing here, I'm not, but achieve above and beyond and make Madison so proud of what they do, whether it's on the field, in a DDC office, or helping out on Bottle Hill Day. So right now, we want to recognize our field hockey team, so please, field hockey team, come on up, and our coaches, will you join? Thank you. Hey! Yes, yeah. But I didn't see, I didn't see your coach at the reunion, but we won't. And this has almost become an annual event, having the field hockey team here. Yes, nothing wrong with that, it makes us very proud. The mayor and council hereby congratulate the members of the Madison High School Girls' Field Hockey Team for achievement in winning the NJAC Liberty Division Championship, Morris County Championship, North One Group Two State Sectional Championship. These accomplishments required extraordinary effort, outstanding teamwork, dedication, and perseverance. We commend the team members for their commitment in reaching these goals, and we recognize coaches Anne Marie Davies, my classmate, Victoria Sacco, Caitlin Bertos, Clarissa Sacco. For their leadership in training, the dedication, and achievements of these outstanding athletes have brought great pride to the Borough of Madison. In testimony of our appreciation, I have hereunto set the official seal of the Borough of Madison and present one of these to each of you.
We'd like to thank the borough for honoring us tonight. We are very proud to represent the Madison High School Field Hockey Team with a record of 19-2, four championships, conference county, and two sectional and a state, north two, group one, group one, championship, state championship, one short of winning everything, but these kids are definitely champions in every aspect, and we are so proud. aspect, and we are so proud of them, and we thank you again for honoring, and we're glad to be here. Thank you.
Erin Blount. Samantha Blount. Make sure there's not two in there. Yep, I thought, yep. Megan Brennan. Brianna Brown. Mae Byrne. Abby Teporian. Catherine Crowley. Amanda De Silva. Caitlin De Silva. Stephanie Delaviva. I pronounce, I practice those too. Delavias, thank you. Sydney Fielding. Emily Flum. Gabby Fuchs. Sage Guyer. Anna Gutz. Caitlin Hanley. Sarah Luciano. Luciano, thanks, I should know that, I live in Madison. Karen Mobley. Carrie Ann Murphy. Deanna Purce. Alissa Romano. Claire Shannan. Caroline Saline. Morgan Smith. Chloe Stern. Lauren Taylor. Emma Tickner. Caroline Turnbull. Samantha Wechsgeiser. Not, not least, Emma Yost. Congratulations, here, applause one more time. Don't move one second, I want to read the back of your shirt. I just want to point out, the back of the shirt, we have the Conference County Sectional Championship, it's a great motto, and no matter what you're going through, your friends are there to help you. That's how you win championships. Congratulations. On your way out, don't forget to take a cup of cupcakes. We, I, I baked them. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Eat the cupcakes, please.
Okay, just a few more comments, and then we'll get back to our business at hand. I want to congratulate all the volunteers that made the Christmas parade such a special event this year, and particularly the Total family with Carmen in organizing and making sure everyone's going to the right spot in the parade, and Marie with her announcing and every, each and every float and describing what has gone into it. It's a great event, and also want to thank Mrs. Claus, she did a fine job along with Santa Claus. Mrs. Claus, we found out, just became a grandmother, so congratulations, Fran Boardman. And if you haven't, I'm sure everyone has seen the tree in the center of town, but it is a spectacular tree, and I want to commend the electric company because the way that tree stands out this year with the lights, shows they really took pride in decorating the tree. This past week, we had the annual police auxiliary dinner, and thanked them for all their services. The DDC made gifts to them because many of these events, such as the Christmas parade on the day after Thanksgiving, Bottle Hill Day, the Little League Parade, everything wouldn't be possible without the auxiliary police. And as I pointed out, one of the things that makes these events so special is the extra thing they have in their uniform. They all have their shirts, their pants, and all that, but these auxiliary police volunteers have their smiles as part of their uniform because they really represent Madison very well. I also want to point out, the Madison Historical Society had their annual resale this past Saturday. It was great to go back to my old home house, and it's come a long ways after eleven children ran through that house. It was beautiful to look at that, it's a piece of Madison history. And with that, let's go on to reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Okay, just have two short ones. Flu shots for children. The Madison Health Department will be giving these shots on Mondays from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. now through the end of December, excluding December twenty-second. And secondly, they want to remind all residents that all dogs and cats, including those that do not go outside, need to be licensed. These renewals are due during the month of January, and in effort to make life a little easier for residents, they're going to extend their hours on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, and they'll be open from 4:30 to 7:00. That's it.
Thank you. And utilities, and if you have a report on DPW and engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, they've had a busy week because they've had to pump out and clean manholes and transformers of the vaults all along Central Avenue. And there was also an emergency repair on a transformer vault on Waverly Place. They also began the system reinforcement of the Ridgedale Avenue Circuit, and they replaced a twenty-five KVA transformer on King's Road. Water Department has been moving ahead, they, with their usuals, markouts of utilities, meter replacements, shut-offs, and water sample analysis as well. They also welcomed a new laborer into the Water Department who has started their training program. From DPW, the 2014 Road Improvement Program, milling and paving work for the remaining five roads, which were Pine Tree, Derwood, Fletcher, Niles, and North, is completed, and final signage, striping, and punch list items are anticipated to be completed this week. If any of the residents are affected by a municipal road construction work and has quality or completeness issues that require Madison's attention, please contact the Borough Engineer within the next two weeks. Final payment and change order requests from the general contractor, who was the felon's son, are anticipated to be received shortly and processed over the holiday season due to successive scheduled delays in construction. The good news is the work is complete, and the holiday season should be able to be enjoyed fully on the municipal roads that have been reconstructed. The Waverly Green parking lot plans and specifications are nearly complete, and the Borough of Madison anticipates advertising the project in January for spring construction work. Also, news from the library about the HVAC system. Ceiling and the lighting repairs designed by E.L. Associates for this project was advertised in October, and the Borough received bids Thursday, November thirteen. All the bids exceeded the estimates prepared by the consultant, and the project will require a rebid. A strategic planning capital meeting is being held this evening at 7:00 p.m. The final strategic capital recommendations will present it, will be presented next month at a public meeting. One thing to be very, please take note that this is the last round of leaf pickup this week. So get your leaves out because they are on the third round of picking up leaves, and this will be it. So if you have landscapers, tell them to get themselves busy and get them out on the curb. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just briefly want to mention that we've had a number of changes in our Police Department. Lieutenant Lamb retired after twenty-five years of service. We've had several others retire, and we've also had a dispatcher come and go, but we are hiring, and we are getting them back on the street again, and we just hired a new dispatcher, Michael Mastro. And so we will be in, we are in safe hands, and I want to thank our Safety Departments, Fire and Police, our Auxiliary Police. They logged ninety-three hours in the month of November. Our Crossing Guards for doing a great job of protecting our residents this year, and for their service this year, and may they have a very happy holiday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Our advanced refunding, which we had spoken about at previous meetings, closed on December fourth, and that makes it official. The Borough will now be saving approximately $1 million in interest expense over the life of these bonds. Purchasing moratorium has been put in place for the Borough effective today, which facilitates an orderly close of the financial records for this year. That's a usual and typical practice that's been followed every year, so if you happen to hear about it, or friends hear about it and wonder if something special's going on, nothing special. This is a regular activity that's part of our closing the books for the fiscal year. There's an item on the agenda tonight, this proposed settlement with the FMBA, our firefighters' union. They've waived arbitration and voluntarily settled their contract. Their leadership in this and previous years, and negotiations in the past, has to be commended. They do an excellent job in showing a high level of cooperation with the Borough. The Electric Utility Rebate Program for 2014 stopped accepting new applications as of the first of December. We have a preliminary count, preliminary only because there were some applications where verification of income is still pending, but at this point, we have approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-five families and individuals who have serious financial constraints, and at least we were able to help them out some with their utility expenses. You should also note that preliminary discussions on the 2015 budget have begun, it's the usual cycle, and one of the things that should be a little different this year, we'll be talking about shortly in this meeting, and that is the report of the Strategic Planning Committee on the Municipal Budget, which among other things suggests very serious and significant guidelines that should guide that process in the future. And we'd like to see that start with this year's budget, 2015. Before I turn it over, Mayor, I have a question. I have an announcement from the Clerk's Office regarding the annual reauthorization meeting. Would you like to announce that, or?
I assume you would. A reminder that this is the last meeting of 2014, and we will be back here on New Year's Day at 12:00 noon for our annual reorganization meeting, so put that on your calendar, and we hope to see you all here. Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I lost my momentum there. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just announcements from the Senior Center tonight. We've received notice from the Volunteer Management Center, which runs the Telephone Insurance Program, that it will be closing at the end of this year. For the last forty years, the VMC has taken great pride in connecting individuals and groups to volunteer opportunities through affiliation with over five hundred nonprofit schools, government agencies, and other organizations in New Jersey. While this closing was not unexpected, the Senior Center volunteers are looking forward to a reorganization of these programs under the management of the Northwest New Jersey Community Action Partnership this coming January. Norwestscape has been instrumental in developing these type of programs for the county, and their leadership will provide a timely and necessary restructuring. And last, the Harmony House held their ribbon cutting ceremony on Wednesday, December third, in their renovated facility on Division Ave. We look forward to working with them in meeting the needs for adult daycare resources. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items that are on our agenda discussion, which is things listed at number thirteen, and any resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. The items that are in discussion tonight are the Strategic Planning Committee Municipal Budget Presentation, the Madison Athletic Foundation Corridor Report, the Green Village Road School Redevelopment Plan Amendment, Council Best Practices, which is kind of a repackaging of the Code of Conduct, just a quick couple of comments on that will be coming up, the cancellation of completed capital improvement ordinances, cancellations of, and this is a whole series of year-end things that we take care of every year, outstanding cancelling outstanding checks, capital grant, current year appropriation of electric utility cancellation, and cancellation emergency appropriation of electric utility. And the last item is the Museum of Early Trade and Crafts' temporary use of space at Hartley Dodge Memorial. If you wish to comment on any of those, or again, one of the resolutions, please step up the lectern, state your name, state the agenda item you're commenting on, and then keep your comments three minutes or less. If you do want to comment on the redevelopment amendment, there will be a hearing for that one, so please hold off on those until the hearing. And Gina, thank you for covering. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. And our first one is Strategic Planning Committee Municipal Budget, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
This evening, we're going to be discussing the second of four of the strategic plans that have come out of the effort that's been going on for the better part of this year. This one in particular focuses on the municipal budget, as I mentioned just a few moments ago. The members of this committee have included Tom Bittenger, who will make the presentation this evening, he's been the chair, Art Powell, Mike Soriano, Paul Logier, and it's been my pleasure to participate. We've also had extensive assistance from a number of people who are not named on the committee, but indeed, some of them became in effect de facto members. And that would include Jim Burnett, Ray Cody, and Robert Califford. So we want to thank them all, and all the other people who have helped out. Now, as I mentioned during my remarks earlier, we don't look upon this as a static presentation. We look upon this as a way of making as much as possible in our budget deliberations objective, and having benchmarks against which to compare what we're proposing against those things that seem to be best in the, in the interest of the Borough. So with that in mind, I wanted to also mention one of the caveat, and that is that this is a preliminary draft of the presentation, only because two other committees have yet to report, utilities and capital. And the amount of surplus generated by utilities and the cost of capital improvements on an annual basis, as you will see, are critical to this analysis, so we've used placeholders that certainly pass the test of reasonableness, but to the extent they are not, in fact, what the other committees come up with will come back with a smaller revision. Thank you. With that, Tom Bittenger.
It looks like it works. Thanks, Jim. I do want to comment that Art Powell is not present here tonight, but Paul Logier and Mike Soriano, if you'd like to stand up and at least be acknowledged for all your hard work. And Ben, obviously, has already done his. Art's had a family emergency, and he is in Chicago having to take care of his father, so we miss him. He was very instrumental in this.
One side comment. I guess the proof of the pudding, that there's nothing that will clear the house faster than death and taxes. A little bit of an outline here of what we're going to talk about, our approach, a little bit of a discussion of context for our budget work, and then concepts that we found, I think, important for the Borough to be understanding of significant elements that contribute to this budget approach and analysis. Our observations that we've made as we went through the discussions with ourselves, and we've been at this for almost a year now, and then finally, the budget guidelines, and then we tee up, I think, some of the issues that we'll be interested in having, I guess, the input from our current Borough Council, and hopefully... the input from our current Borough Council, and hopefully, subsequent ones as well, as we identify key issues and concerns and questions. What we had to do first is create a charter for our committee. One of the very first words up there to develop a multi-year budget framework, one of the key things that I think we identified is the annual budget is only one step in a journey. And you have to anticipate what you're planning on doing, and you have to foresee, I think, with the coming councils, building on what has happened in the past. We've tried to integrate all of the borough activities, operations, capital, municipality, utilities, and consistent with the long-term planning. I think, as Ben mentioned, the utility and the capital improvement committee are very instrumental to this particular analysis. What we've attempted to do is develop guidelines for revenues and appropriations, capital spending and debt, as well as surplus. He thought there, you have to create a balance between changes in appropriations and revenue. And whether it's one side or the other, they all have to be considered. You can't make a change in one without considering a change in the other. And then finally, we wanted to have something that was simple and easy to understand. One of the other things that we tried to identify was what is a mission for our annual budget? And I think we ended up with this particular thought, that the borough's annual municipal budget should provide and support the services desired by residents. And that's assuming they want to pay for it. Be prepared in accordance with New Jersey law. And one of the, I think, significant added factors that we wanted to bring to your attention is qualitative factors. Most people focus on the number, but there are other qualitative aspects that need to be dealt with. Prudence, consistency, stability, predictability. Those, as you step back and evaluate a budget, those factors have to be considered as to whether it has been a good budget. And then finally, a recognition of the impact of inflation. If things are going up, if costs go up, part of that inflation, unless they're dealt with, then you're going to have to recognize that. Our context for budget work, I think a significant thing that most people forget, that the borough is the property tax collector, not only for itself, but for the county and for the schools. 61% of what we collect in terms of the borough pertains to the school. We bear the risk of all uncollected taxes and appeals. So the county and the school board are assured of getting 100% of their levy. Any loss, when you take a look at the budget in brief, you'll always see provision for uncollectibles. And that sizable number is to provide and anticipate that particular potential condition. What are the differentiators that make Madison budget unique? I think we are probably one of the few communities that provide a bundle of services without additional fees and taxes. Our sewage, our trash collection, a fire department that is paid, a health department. We are, I think, clearly, when you go through and take a look and compare with other boroughs, other towns, municipalities, we are an outlier. And probably the last one over there, the utility support. What are there, I think, Ray, what are one of eight, nine, communities that actually participate and provide utilities? And that truly does make us an outlier and one that has a significant impact, as you'll see as we go through and discuss. So I think that kind of summarizes, I think, the overall context that we tried to understand. What did we do then? We tried to identify some significant concepts that I think any taxpayer, any citizen of Madison, is going to have to understand. What is the municipal surplus lifecycle? The aspect of the capital improvement fund? And then we're going to suggest for you an alternative budget format. What we've here on the slide is identified as the 2013 surplus flow. You'll see up there that we started at the end of '12 with $5,592,000. We generated in 2013 $2,975, but we used it in the 2013 budget. So we only ended up starting the year with $2,600 and odd dollars. We generated, however, during that year, $4,633,000 to end the year with $7,250,000. What are the generators of that? Revenue was greater than budget, spending was lower than budget. Let's talk a little bit about trends in surpluses revenue. This is, I think, a big and significant issue. We have here a schedule that demonstrates the ebb and flow from, starting with 2008, which generated in that particular year $3,854,000, and we used in the succeeding year, you know, in a dignified number over there, and going on up to 2014. Interesting, if you take a look and add up what we generated and what we used, they almost come in with several hundred thousand dollars of one another in those particular years. We generated $23,159,000, and we used $23,442,000. That ebb and flow, we'll spend some time talking about and how it impacts our budget. Capital Improvement Fund. Little bit of a mystery, I think, to people in terms of trying to understand that. The municipal budget works in conjunction with the budget for our capital improvement fund. And I think it's been identified, there is another committee that's working on that, and it's going to be presenting its report next week, or?
In January.
January.
In January.
But it then does, the amount that is provided in the municipal budget is then transferred to a separate fund. So it acts as kind of like an intermediary bank. What then happens? Then, on an annual basis, or during the year, capital expenditures are authorized by the council. And those then are drawn from that capital improvement fund. So the number that you see in the annual budget is not for specific projects. It is being used to fund that capital improvement fund. That, again, is a very, very critical aspect, and you'll see it, I think, as we talk about, when we think about these qualities, stability, consistency, you will see that becomes a very important issue. Alternative budget format, this is one thing that we worked, I think, on very hard. What you'll see, I think, in the very first thing that happens, we flipped appropriations and revenue. Appropriations are the driver in everything that we do. And then, how are we going to pay for it? The revenues that are going to satisfy that. Second thing that we tried to do was identify two significant aspects of fund flows, which are called the operational, which tend to be the annual type of costs, and then the capital cost, the long-term. And we separated those so that you can see what the appropriations are, and then where are they being funded from? At the end of that schedule, you'll see an analysis that is called shortfall, revenue less appropriations. You'll see operations in 2014 were short, $2,319,000. In other words, the revenues from this carryforward surplus, from property taxes, from municipal fees, from state aids, when you add those up, they were two-plus million dollars short to provide for those services. Where's the money coming from? You'll see there at the bottom, a little bit of a little thing, utility transfers. And historically, this has been the methodology that the borough of Madison has used to fund its day-to-day operations. The other thing then is the capital side. Well, you'll see that we ended up with a shortfall of $3,927,000. And that, I think, is one of the significant things that we'll talk about. Those were covered by the electric for $5,796,000 and our water utility. We're going to deal with observations in four categories: surplus developments, history of the operating shortfalls, the history of the capital improvement fund, and then the trends in utility transfers and property taxes. First slide there talks about surplus developments. I think you saw a little bit of that earlier on. The surplus in 2013 was rebuilt. You can see the highlighted number. We were kind of at an absolute low in 2010. We're up to $7,250,000 at the end of 2013. As a percentage of our budget for the subsequent year, if you will, you can see how it varies. In the early years, '04, '05, we were in the 30% range, dropped into the teens. And now we're kind of in a number that we think is probably a good rebuilding. Now with the prudent levels in terms of an absolute amount and in terms of budget cushion. What we're trying to do is figure out how to avoid wide fluctuations, except in emergency situations. So we've kind of just zeroed in there on the last five years in terms of trying to take a look at it. But you'll see at the very bottom of that slide, the average over the last 10 years, the surplus has been contributing 28.7% of our annual budget. I think that's a little high, and so we'll be talking a little bit about that. History of operating shortfalls. I think, you know, we discussed what is an operating shortfall, but again, you can see here for the last 10 years, or 11 years if you include 2014, we averaged out $1,700,000 of average shortfall of paying for our services, the police, the fire, the trash, all of those things that become very, very important for our day-to-day living. History for the capital improvement funds. This is one, I think, where dealing with these adjectives that we talked about, predictability, consistency, stability, is really, I think, very, very evident. If you take a look at that, the total appropriations, and then the second, what is going to the capital improvement fund? $2,005,000,000. You know, a few years, $500,000. 2014 really jumped, but people would identify it, we're catching up on deferred capital Big number. You'll see something close to that again. Interestingly, if you go back into '94, even 10 years preceding, the utility, the transfers, if you will, from the utility that's being identified there have ranged from 22% to 38% of the annual budget. The generation of funding for the operation of the borough has been provided by our utilities. Again, go back to the beginning, it's one of the hallmarks that distinguish us. I think we're probably one of four of how many boroughs and towns? Hundreds. Those, I think, are just fairly well-explanatory. I should comment that I think there are going to be copies of these slides that are going to be available out, well, afterwards.
If I may, what we're going to do is put them up on RoseNet.
Okay. So you'll tell them where people can find it. I know sometimes.
Yeah, hard copies would be available at the Borough Clerk's office, or to help the numbers, you can print it out at home off of RoseNet.
So if you're taking a look at this, the question that we really have down at the end of the bottom there, is 2014 an unusual year, or is it the new normal that we're having to deal with? And you'll see over the average down there at the bottom for the last 10 years, including 2014, we've averaged 17.2% contributing towards the annual borough budget. Other big revenue item, property taxes. What's the trend in property taxes? They've rose from 44% of total revenue in 2005 up to 54% 2011. And they keep on kind of bobbing and weaving, trend reversed. So we fell to, in 2014, to 46%. However, you'll note that they have been substantially flat in dollar terms for the last three years. Does that necessarily mean that taxes for the borough portion have remained flat? They could be potentially impacted by the slight increases in ratables, so actually there would probably be a slight reduction for everybody. I'm sure Robert and Ben can tell us what that percentage might be. It's not sizable, but at least it's a contribution. Let's talk a little bit about now, about guidelines. We've identified those out of a historical past, one of our earlier conversations that we had. Borough councils used to have a set of guidelines that had been adopted, they may not have been as complete as ours, but they identified key issues. And we thought that was a good concept to build on and going through. So there to be, I think, a firm but flexible rule, giving flexibility to borough councils for reasons, but then they'll have to be measured against flag deviations, so that people know that they are being used to contribute to the annual budget. They're designed to protect the financial health of the borough and to encourage that all spending changes, appropriation changes, have to be balanced with revenue adjustments or vice versa. We have developed these, I think, the reason that we were doing a lot of analysis over the years is to kind of use history as guideposts. So they are, what are history that we've had? We've considered what rating agencies would look at in terms of establishing thresholds for prudent practices. You know, they don't do them in the abstract, they have the ability to really compare. Very first surplus guideline. Surplus at the end of any calendar year should be in the range of 20% to 25% of the total appropriations for the coming year. Art Powell always likes to use the analogy, this is what he calls the Goldilocks balance. Not too big that we're considered hoarders, but not too small that we would be considered imprudent. Rating agencies really look, I think, to the assurance of our ability to cover any unforeseen events. And I think, as Ben mentioned, the refunding of the bonds and our AAA rating are a key identifier, I think, in that. So you'll end up seeing as a percentage, you know, seeing the range 38% to 18% to 17% to 24%. And we've identified that it looks like the 20% to 25% range is, I think, a good metric that can be used. Use of surplus in the guidelines coming, that they should not exceed any surplus generated in the prior calendar year. I think this is designed to create, I think, some conservatism in the budget, but it's also to provide, if you will, if surpluses grow, and they can be for unusual reasons, they will help contribute to the quality.
Tom, can I ask one question? If you follow that, but you also put a cap on how big the surplus should grow, what do you do if the surplus starts getting above 25%? Don't you have to take more than it grew the previous year to draw it down below that 25?
There's one that we haven't identified, because I think it's a slightly small. We've identified that anything that would be in excess of 25% would be considered as funding for the capital improvement.
Oh, so you're saying not using it for operating, but use it for capital?
For the capital improvement fund. Effectively, just by the way it'll operate, what it does is it lessens the burden on other, you know, situations. Utility transfers. Utility budgets should recognize that the annual budgets to the municipal will be a Utility budgets should recognize that the annual budgets to the municipal will be in the range of 17% to 20%. When we talk about utility transfers, we are including both water and electric. Historically, water has been kind of included as a, if you will, a miscellaneous municipal revenue. We believe it should be considered. One of the things that I know, setting utility rates, that we've identified, we looked at what are water rates in our surrounding areas? And I know people always like to focus on electric, but on the other hand, our water rates are absolutely lower by almost 50% than any other competing towns and areas. So they are, you know, something that needs to also be considered as we identify surplus transfers. So we're looking at over here, the historical range. Again, you've seen this slide before, just to bring it back into context so you don't have to keep flipping back and forth. Average was 17. You can see in certain years over here that, you know, it's been very, very low, very high, but we think that is, quote, "a reasonable number." Again, it's going to be very, very key, based on, you know, our budget format, about the capital improvement needs. The surplus at the water and electric utilities after transfer to the budget should be sufficient to assure in their own right, they are sizable businesses that need to be focused on, I think, by, I think, our taxpayers. We are the owners of very sizable businesses. And they need to have the assurance that they have the ability to work with their own working capital needs, their own long-term capital needs, and a provision for contingencies. Sometimes, you know, there may be a major outage or something of that nature, revenues may be impacted. But again, the surplus that we talk about is only at the municipal level that we are focusing on. The surpluses that are at the utilities will be to run their business. They are not to be used as hiding places. They're not to be used as anything, you know, that other than to manage their business. And they have to be managed, taking into account the long-term needs of the borough for its budget. Property taxes, we have decided that as a long-term target, property taxes should be the majority of budgeted revenue. If you go back and take a look at the slide, given needs, just a no property tax increase approach, I think, as you look at it in the long term, is just not going to be as sustainable. It has to be done in conjunction with some of the state requirements that's imposed. Regular and modest increases are, I think, to keep pace with spending because they're prudent and reasonable. I guess there is another option. You can actually try to cut spending for some reason, and therefore, you know, property taxes will not necessarily have to rise. But again, it's one of those balanced things. If you're spending something, you've got to raise money from someplace. And we're suggesting that property taxes are the place that, you know, should be, looking in the long term as majority. Operation shortfall. Again, we talked about the idea of the budget format, the day-to-day operations. We think that the shortfall should range from 7% to 9% of total appropriations. Again, you've seen this slide over the years. For, for instance, a $30 million budget, the range would be somewhere in the range of 2.1% to 2.7 million. I think it's consistent with history, with some, I think, future flexibility.
Tom, one question. You say $30 million budget, but this year the operating budget was actually closer to 24, correct?
No, when we say the total budget.
Okay.
So it's just not the operational budget, it is the total budget. So you'll measure the 7% to 9% against the 30 million.
So that includes capital?
Yes, yes. Debt service. Debt service within the municipal budget should not exceed 10% of total appropriations. Again, we have identified that debt service and capital improvement funding should be combined. Capital, debt service has been for capital improvements. One of the things that we think that any new debt should be limited to long-term or long-lived assets. We made a cutoff of 15 years. Basically, I think we're talking about primarily buildings. We don't consider streets and roads. Those are annual kind of expenditures that you should be continuing to take a look at. Major equipment, for instance, back of the utilities. You don't necessarily be going to buy generators or transformers, et cetera, but other than, they should be anticipated on a continuous basis. You can see there, at the end of 2014, we're at 7.9. So there's a little bit of latitude. The rating agency threshold, I think I said, was basically roughly the 10%. Capital improvement fund, 8% to 12% of the total appropriations. Again, taking a look, here's the schedule. Only when you get to 2014 do you come anywhere close. So it tells you, again, using the qualitative aspects of measuring the quality of our budget, this falls woefully short on the stability, predictability range, and it's dealing with the issue that we have today. So a five-year history, I think, is we then are encouraging that reporting be done by the chief financial officer. At least the budget and brief document should be looking out from three to five years so you can see the trends, so that you're not shortfall-ing, kicking a shortfall in the current year down the road. Key issues. We tried to take a look and said, okay, what will we do as we look forward? So we ran, and it's going to be part of the long-term report that will finally be published, where we did arrange from 2012, or 2011 through 2017, a little bit of history, a little bit of forward-looking. We made the assumption, no change in type, level, or quality of municipal services. That's somebody else's job. I think you're kind of looking at them over here. We're just saying, assuming that, the same things happen, police, fire, trash, et cetera, this is what we're going to have. We assume that there'd be a 2% increase in operating appropriations as well as with property taxes. And in going into the 16, 17 years, 3 million annual appropriations for the capital improvement fund. Again, going back to our little, what's the needs? This would be the forecasted needs then, going from 2015 or 2017 to fund the actual running of the day-to-day services required. Goes from 2.4% down to 2 million. So cost control becomes important, and you may need to, and we may need to develop new revenue streams when you're trying to take a look in conjunction with other things. $5 to $6 million a year in capital needs. I think identified there, we just got a placeholder for the capital improvements committee. We're identified, you know, the 2015 budget was the one kind of portrayed in last year's budget and brief document, so we just used that for 15, 16, and 17, the 3 million. And debt service is pretty constant over that period of time. So those are the needs, leads us to the questions. Size and scope of borough operations, bundled services that are in our tax bills, the sewer, the trash, the fire, the health department, care of the streets and parks, et cetera. What services do you want most? What's affordable? What's going to be the allocation to the capital improvement fund? Support the municipal services? Maintain the borough's infrastructure? Go back to municipal revenues, how much surplus should be used in the annual budget? We've kind of said, okay, it's going to be what you generate with a maximum in the preceding Revenue adjustments are options. Adjust, raise fees, even, I know, the ultimate, maybe we might have to take some exceptions to the 2% tax levy cap. Municipal revenues, other size of utility transfers, should it cover all operating and capital shortfalls? Is it feasible for them to transfer $7 million annually? Is it more desirable to use utility surplus to lower electricity rates? But when you're taking a look at that, then, what's the other side? Still have the appropriations, how are you going to pay for them on the revenue side? Summary, and I like to just focus on the little icon that we've used, the balance scale, and the guidelines are kind of the foundation that we're asking you to adopt, to take a look at. There are the funding for challenging what you're doing. Revenues and spending, and as somebody pointed out, I guess Art left a little G out of the spending there, just to see if everybody was awake, I guess. And then the quality factors. What we're trying to do is establish a firm but flexible budget process, and it becomes a culture, I think, for our planning processes here. We have to make sure that we, when we look at appropriations, we're also balancing that with what we can do on the revenue side. And that completes, I think, our project.
Excellent job, committee. Tremendous job.
I don't know if you want to add questions, but we might be, you know, able to answer three of your fundings.
Yeah, we'll take it. But I think what we just saw not only is a path to give us a basis to make decisions for the future, but also a great municipal financing 101 for incoming elected officials and others, just to go through that and see how it all works, so.
We have, in the long-term, the long-form report, the written report, we've added in there a primer on municipal accounting because it took us a while to figure out, you know, what has to be, things of that nature. We also then put an appendix there, that kind of did the array of how you took it past years and the future years. So once that final gets finalized, when we get the other two reports complete, and I think we can then plug all those together, I think that will be when we finally finish our job.
Start with Ben, and then any other comments or questions?
Sure. If there are questions, why don't we go first?
Yeah, any questions?
These are just comments. I mean, first of all, I thought it was excellent. You know, a 60-page report, you boiled it down and made it very, very simple to follow. As you're going through it, I just highlighted a few things which I'm going to use going forward in this coming budget process. You talked about flexibility, which is key. You talked about ranges. You didn't give specific numbers, which ranges, which kind of gets back to the whole issue of flexibility. You talked about long-term versus short-term, and that's key. And then I just dog-eared a few pages. You know, you talked about the balance, which, that's always the case. But more importantly, you said something which, as a selected official, I have to keep in mind. The budget has to account and provide and support the services desired by the residents. So what may not make pure budget sense, if the residents want it, you have to make an exception for it.
And then you're going to have to explain to them how it's going to be paid for.
Exactly, exactly. And then finally, we bear all risk. So we have to take that into account as well. I thought this was very well done.
Any other comments or questions? Pat?
Yeah, well, first I want to thank you guys. I think you did a great job. I think this really gives us a good idea of where we should be looking to keep the budget over the next, you know, several years. I think if you look back too far, you go back to a period of time that's really, we couldn't recreate, but I think the last decade or so was a good time to kind of look at.
I think we tried to use 10 years, who I think kind of encompassed a lot of a period of time. You had some ebbs and flows in that period, but it still gave you, I think, gave us at least, a degree of comfort. And I think, you know, we tried to work with Rick, explain, you know, what's back there? What's the story behind it? Are we really missing something?
The one thing I'd actually take a look at is, is I was sitting here trying to figure this out on the fly, and that is, right now, we're kind of bumping up, or maybe slightly above, the recommended utility transfer number. I think we're a little bit over 20. And we allocated $3.5 million this year for capital. I think you showed next year we were looking to do a similar number, maybe three. However, this year, we did have about $1.9 million of one-time money from the general capital fund balance and the sale of property that was utilized for the capital. So absent that money in next year's budget, I don't know how we're going to do that without breaking that upper 20% boundary on the utility transfer. So we may have to take a closer look at that band.
Well, we'll take a look at the band, but, you know, there are other potential options in there. I think that's your challenge in terms of how you fit those together. No one guideline, at least in my personal opinion, is to be viewed as the absolute overriding principle. You're going to end up having, I think, an interplay with different ones. But then you're going to explain why it's there as opposed to, and the other. That, I think, is the key thing that we're trying to make.
But I do really like the idea of bands. I think Ben brought this up when he started this, is, you know, really, where should we be targeting? And it gives us something to measure. We can go back and look over the last decade, which you did, and as we go forward, we can see and start to, you know, draw a trend line. Are we going up? Are we going down? Are we getting near one of the boundaries? You know, what are we going to do so we don't cross that in subsequent budgets? Because you're right, budgets don't live, you know, we do a budget for one year, but we really have to look multi-year to make sure we're not taking the borough in the wrong direction.
I don't think we want to take a look at the, I think those quality factors, consistency, predictability, need to be taken into account.
Again, thank you very much, everybody. Carmella?
Tom, thank you so much. I'm still carrying what I called the primer that was done by Art Powell, and I wish I had it like years ago because I had to take a lot of classes in municipal budgeting, and it's very different than regular accounting. So I'm looking forward to seeing that and be part of what we can just give to future councils.
I think anybody that would run for office, I think, we suggest taking a look at that thing. I think even the public.
Absolutely.
I think the municipal accounting primer was something that we said, let's, and this was a credit to Art because he was not familiar. He sat down and literally tried to write the key issues that he identified, and I think it really was a very nice job.
So it's wonderful. Thank you very much to everybody that did such hard work. I think it's very interesting, and I have to give some more thought to it about what you're talking about, the water utility. I've used the word stepchild here more than once about the water utility, and I think that that's an important factor. I'm glad that you did bring that up again tonight, so, you know, that's something we're going to keep in the back of our heads to really discuss.
Absolutely, yes. I think both of those are owned by the citizens of Madison.
Absolutely.
And they should view it as they are the shareholders in the operation of that business. And what is it, what should it be doing?
You look outside in the history, right? I think Jim found an article in the Madison Eagle that goes back to 1890 when there was an ordinance that actually passed, one of the, that actually developed that water utility. So we have, we have a good history behind us with that, and we can't live without water. So.
Yep. I'd be real.
Thank you.
Mike, Paul, did I leave anything out, or?
I mean, Mike, you have to come up to a mic.
That's the thing that struck me going through the numbers, was that there was an average that about 49% over time of the appropriations were funded by property taxes. And if you take 17% about was the average of what came from our utility transfers. And I think something that was pointed out by, I can't remember whether it was Jim or Ray or Robert, but was that surrounding towns average about 66% of their appropriations covered by property taxes. So the electric utility, to me, is the key in the future, as it has been in the past, for the economic stability of the town. And I also feel that it's about $22, $23 million in revenues, and if you add those $22, $23 million in revenues to about, close to a $30 million budget, the town is operating, if you will, over a $50 million business. And I think that the electric utility has to be treated as a business. I'm happy to see some of the work that's being done in that direction right now.
And the water.
And the water. But I think that with the electric utility, I would, and I'm speaking for myself, not necessarily for the committee, I would like to see at least twice a year, a presentation on the health of the electric. on the health of the electric utility to the council. And what I worry about today as a 41-year resident of the town is that we can't predict what is going to happen to energy or electricity costs that we are as a purchaser. We can't predict what's happening to demand with all the green revolution that's going on and trends in demand. So I think it's really prudent to keep a close eye and a close watch on the electric utility over the years and treat it like, as a business. And, because I think our future as taxpayers depend on the health of the electric utility.
Yep, and I think we'll see regular reports, just as you suggested, in the future. Ben, you talk about next steps and-
Yes, thank you. I want to start out by saying that what this committee has managed to do, and I have to say, although I've been a part of it a bit to my own surprise, is answer questions that in previous discussions about the budget, I thought could never be answered objectively. But indeed, we have. Questions about how much surplus is the right amount, for example, has always been an issue. How much money should be transferred from surplus into the budget is an issue that we've spent a great deal of time as a council on, with I have to, at least my own feeling, is with little or no objective guidance. And now we have some guidance. It is not final, as we said earlier. We're still waiting on some results that will be component pieces of this. But at any point, I would encourage certainly my colleagues, and we've been doing this in smaller meetings, but any of our residents who have an interest, and I hope you all do, in at least understanding the process a bit more, to take a look at these slides and give it a little time. And certainly, any of us would be happy to talk to you about it. I mean, a large part of what we're trying to accomplish is not only to have the debate in this room be a more informed debate, but to have the debate in this borough be a more informed debate. And the other thing I'd like to say is, this has been a pretty brave group. I mean, we've gone on to try and be very objective about things that have caused some heat at these tables and some heat outside this room. And what I'd like to do is, and I've talked to the group about it, and so far, they haven't committed, but I think I'm getting closer, is to keep the group going. And the reason to do that is because now we've answered some of these, I would say, macro questions when you look at the budget. But what we haven't had the opportunity to do is to go down another level and ask ourselves questions about how much we spend for the various services we all enjoy. And is that indeed the right amount? Or should we be considering some changes in that based on how other communities operate or anything objective we can find in the literature concerning these types of operations? So, it's, it was always intended to be a one-year term to the report. The question now is, is this the only report? And I would hope that the answer to that question is no, that indeed, this is just part of a now beginning and hopefully ongoing process. So again, I was very pleased to be a part of this, and I thank all my colleagues on it. It was totally, I mean, the focus was entirely on the numbers. And, excuse me, as Tom said a number of times, it's really up to us to make the decisions about how things are actually run. These are guidelines, they are not constraints. And so with that, I thank you all very much.
Excellent work. Thank you all. And hopefully, they will take your encouragement, and New Year's Day, we can reappoint them.
Hope so.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, Madison Athletic Foundation Quarterly Report. Brenda?
Oh, yeah.
And Marty's still here.
Exciting. One page instead of 60. Actually, it is, it's more exciting. We have another check, revenue.
Checks are good. Checks are always-
Checks are good. Balance of our 2014 commitment.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So, here's our fourth quarter update. $50,000 check for the borough. That is the total of our 2014 commitment. In addition, we applied for and were awarded a $50,000 grant. Our 2014 annual appeal is mailing this week, so we hope to get some more, a lot more money with that for another check early next year. We're on target to meet our annual fundraising goal, and we have 17 new M Club plaques that should be installed before the spring sports. That's all I'm committing to. Our plans for 2015, we'd like to try to host a reception somewhere for, to thank our M Club donors. For those of you that don't know, M is the Roman numeral for 1,000, and if 1,000 people donate $3,500, that would cover the cost of the entire turf field complex, so. We are planning a spring 2015 event, much like our 2013 tailgate event at the MRC, which was very fun. And a possible fall gathering, just to launch, like an informal, to launch fall sports.
Thank you. Questions? Ben?
These 17 M Club plaques, these are the ones at $3,500?
Yes, that's in addition to the 20 that are currently installed.
Okay, and the grant, the $50,000 grant, is that something that's renewable, something you can apply for again, or it's a one-off?
It's, it is one we can apply for again in two years.
Uh-huh, okay. Private, public source?
Private.
Private source. Good.
All right, thank you. You're good. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, thank you for all the good news and the checks.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Green Village Redevelopment. We got Bob Powell and Dean, welcome. Thank you for your patience. We have an action-packed evening with our last meeting of the year. redevelopment plan coming up, and so anyone in the audience can comment during that hearing, and right now, a little presentation to help you understand why this request came forward, and we introduced the ordinance at the last meeting. Bob? Bob Powell, KRE.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. My name is Bob Powell. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Feel the light. Is that better?
Yep.
Can you see? Bob Powell, I'm a senior project executive with KRE. And we're here tonight, as the mayor indicated, to request your final approval for an ordinance that will authorize an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Green Village Road School redevelopment project. Respecting the long evening you've had tonight and the many cupcakes we've all consumed, I'll try to be relatively brief with my remarks. I'm going to talk just a little bit about the amendment, and then I'm going to have our architect, Dean Marchetta, provide you with a visual presentation that puts the amendment in what we think is the proper context of the project and its design. The amendment that we asked for your approval for essentially will modify the way the definition of building height in the redevelopment area is defined. When our team first proposed a plan for this project and was fortunate to be designated as your redeeformer, I think you were happy with the plan that we provided, the detailed project, the concept plan. And that has not changed. This amendment is really not designed to change our plan. We continue to, and we will shortly be submitting very detailed documents to your team and the planning board for site plan approval. We're proposing from the beginning, and still are proposing, to build a series of four-story buildings, 135 residential units. The parking will be underneath the buildings, and you'll see some of the more graphic benefits and features of the project shortly with Dean. The reason we asked for the amendment was that as we got into the detailed grading of the site, we discovered that the particular way that the plan as originally written defined building height was going to require that the existing 50-foot-high buildings that we are proposing to build up near King's Road would probably not meet the definition of building height in the existing plan. That plan defines building height by starting with the, what's called, top of curb along King's Road, which is way in front of where our buildings are, and then goes to the roof line of the buildings. What the plan amendment does essentially is change the definition of building height to what we think is a somewhat more common sense definition, which is the distance between the first floor elevation of a building and the roof line. That first floor elevation to the roof line and the buildings that we're proposing to build has not changed during the course of our design. The reason that we request that we have that modification is so we don't have to move the project forward. As you'll see shortly in the presentation, we, one of the features of this project that we're particularly excited about is that we have created a public plaza landscaped assembly area in the front of the project. And we've coupled that landscape feature with a significant and generous setback of the first couple of buildings off of King's Road, approximately 70 feet, way further back than is required in the redevelopment plan. But part of the challenge we encountered when we got into the engineering was that the site, as you all very well know, starts very low on King's Road and proceeds to go up in elevation close to 40 feet at the end. So the further back the buildings go, the more the site tends to rise. So, that caused a technical conflict in measuring the height of a couple of the buildings, because they were higher than the 50 feet. What we're proposing in the plan amendment is that we define building height, as I said, as the difference between the first floor elevation and the roof line. The subject of this amendment has been the topic of two significant meetings we've had with your professionals and the planning board, to explore the details of the amendment, the architecture, the engineering, the landscaping, and the other related planning and design issues. And we're pleased that the planning board, after considering the amendment, had, has recommended that the governing body approve the amendment, as it's been submitted to you tonight. We are excited about moving ahead with the project, and as I said, expect to be submitting our full drawings, literally in a few weeks, and moving ahead with the project early to To further supplement the description of the amendment, and to help you further understand how we think it does not in any way mitigate against the objectives of the redevelopment plan or what the borough wants to see with this project, I want to have our architect, Dean Marchetta, walk you through, and the public, walk through the project generally, because I know some of you have seen this several times, some of you may not have seen it much at all. So we'll try to make this brief, but with respect to those who haven't seen much of it, to do that quickly. And then to just briefly highlight the difference in the perception of building height that is the result of this minor plan amendment, in our view, a minor plan amendment. So Dean, let me ask you to start with the presentation and walk us through the project.
Thank you, Bob. My name is Dean Marchetta. I'm an architect and a planner, and I happen to be, live right down the road in Chatham Borough. So I'm frequently here in Madison downtown, and I would like to start off by saying, you all should be very proud, it's one of the finest downtowns in New Jersey. And as such, as we started to think about what the design for Green Village Road should be, we started out with your downtown, and to try to design a project that was born out of the spirit of Madison's downtown and not something that comes from another place. So, we started out by taking note of what are the characteristics of the downtown. We look at the height of the buildings, we look at the brick, we look at the detail and even the site work. One of the finest buildings I think that I enjoy is the James Building, which is right here at the intersection of Main Street and Green Village Road. Brick building, and of course, this intersection on Waverly with the different color bricks and the different building styles, all at a brick and masonry, things that make the collective character of Madison. And of course, the white sidewalks, the sidewalks, the sidewalk treatment, the street trees, the street furniture, and the kinds of place where residents like to come and shop and meet in the downtown area. And of course, this is looking at Waverly Place from up on the, up on the train abatement. So, let me begin by just show a quick overview. This here is the Green Village Road site. You can recognize the school and the ball fields and King's Road. So, in order to best show you what the proposal is, I'm going to go to another program and show you a 3D model. Let me just switch this. This is the same image of Madison downtown. Here's the train, the train line, this is Main Street, and this is the project site over here. Moment. Just take a moment.
All right.
I'm just going to have to open, close this and open it again. Should be okay. Here we go. I lost these numbers up at the top, but I got them back. Okay, so this is the plan, again, looking down at the rail station, the rail line and the site right in here, Main Street. So the first image here is a tilt-up view, looking down at the front of the site at King's Road, and as Bob had mentioned, the building is pushed back from the curb, which is where my pointer is, back to the building to create a park area. And this here is a 3D view, somewhere on top of the train line, looking east, and you could see the James Building and the Crafts- And you could see the James Building and the Crafts Museum here in Borough Hall. And then this is the site in here. And you can notice that there's a relationship between the coloration of the building and the existing buildings in the downtown. Here in the foreground, you can see the park area and, as we mentioned, this community space shown in with the blue awnings. And I'll just take you on a little tour to show you the building. Basically, this is 135 residential buildings and what, residential units. And what we've done from this plan is we've taken the project and simply fragmented into four smaller buildings so that the buildings are more in scale with the Madison downtown. The closer view from King's Road here. And the main thrust of the plan was to create a new street that comes off of King's Road. It's a public street and it comes right through the project so that the buildings are on a public road and it becomes part of the integrated downtown, as opposed to building a building that has a separate, sort of like a gated community. This is a building that has four separate structures on either side and you can see that the Main Street has public parking and it's open to the public. So it's designed to be an extension of your downtown. And this is a closer view of the park looking, that would be east on King's Road with the railroad on the left and the community space here on the right.
Excuse me, is that representative of the 70-foot setback that you're talking about now?
Yes, yes it is. So to give you a perspective of how it feels, this is an overall view of the downtown. This is Waverly and Main Street. And I can zoom in here, right onto Main Street. And at this point, you can't see the building. If you were to look in this direction, you would see the train here. But as we move closer, let's say maybe standing in front of Alfred Sports Shop and you can see the Crafts Museum, you begin to see the beginning of the building, especially if we move in a little closer, right in here. So that's how much it pops up above as a four-story building. And so this is the Crafts Museum. And then this is looking up Green Village Road. The James Building is on the left. And then what I'm going to do is take you down and look as though you were arriving to the site by train. So this is on the railroad embankment and you're traveling west on the train. And this is the railroad station on the left and on the right. And if we were moving closer, you would see, start moving west and the project begins to appear on the left. Get a little closer here. And if you were to look down over the track into the site, this is, this is that side of the building there with the park out in front here on King's Road. So if you were in the train and you were looking out of the train window, that's kind of the view. And if you were able to remove the glass or pop your head out, that's exactly what you would see. And here you can begin to see King's Road on the bottom of the page, a plaza out in front of the site, and then an upper level park area which opens to a community space of 3,000 square feet that'll have a 12-to-13-foot ceiling for performances by the arts group. So now I'll take you back onto the Green Village roadside. And this is looking above from the Green Village Road. As you move to the back two buildings off of Green Village Road, this next image shows the Jaeger Building here, which is the building that's under construction now, so you can begin to see the scale. And the two buildings in the back pop up on the higher part of the site as a three-story structures. You can see them here. And if you were traveling into downtown along Green Village Road, at this location, you could begin to see the Jaeger Building here on the left. And at this point, the project is not in view, but as you move a little closer and turn, you begin to see the buildings here. And you can begin to see the entrance to the rear portion of the site. And this is what that rear entrance might feel like. And what's really important about the site plan layout for me is that you can see that that public street that separates the buildings on both sides creates a nice view vista and opens up the site from the back towards King's Road. So you have this open view through the site. And then like overall view, looking at the park again in the front and the building here. It's a four-story building. On the ground floor, we have a restaurant and a retail space about 4,000 square feet on the corner. It'll have hopefully outdoor dining, tables and chairs. And then on the left area, underneath this blue awning, is a 3,000-square-foot community So here you can see the juxtaposition of the James Building and the project, on the development right here on the right-hand side. So now what I would like to do is go back into the PowerPoint and describe for you what the difference is between the definition of the building height as formerly defined and now as a result of the building height from ground to roof. This is the site plan and two renderings we have here is a close-up view of the park. Again, it's about 16,000 square feet of open space. This is what it looks like if you're standing on King's Road looking west. And this next image is the comparison of what the two buildings would look like based on the previous and the proposed definition of building height. The definition formally in the redevelopment plan was measured from the curb out here on King's Road. And the building height was set at 50 feet, 4 inches above the curb. Mind you, this is a 50-foot-high building, four stories. The building on the right is what would happen based on the new definition of building height. The approximate height of the building from the road is approximately between five, two and five feet of difference. And this illustration is an accurate model that shows you what that difference looks like side by side. So here on the left is the former definition. And while it may be difficult to see, the building on the right is approximately four and a half to five feet taller than the building on the left. And that's the result of the new definition of the amendment to the ordinance that we're seeking tonight. If you look right here in this corner, you can begin to see the comparison because it's hard to see. So I want to focus your attention onto this corner. This is the Dentist Building in the foreground on the right and on the right here on this side. But you can see here that the building is taller just because of the roof line as it approaches this gable. But that's the difference between the definition as defined currently in the ordinance and on the right, the definition as we're asking it to be changed in this amendment. So that's a summary of what we're proposing.
Any questions, Dean or Bob, on this? Okay. I think that was very helpful and so that will be, we'll be going into the second hearing on that shortly. Thank you very much. It'll be Ordinance 58. All right, council best practices, next thing on the agenda. This is the code of conduct as getting feedback and concerns about possibility of infringing on freedom of speech or how it would be enforced. Realize it was getting away from what my goal was and my goal really is, is that best practice is to help this council and future councils work better together. So we're going to spend some time between now and probably the end of the year to reword some of that. I don't see a need that this is anything that is enforced by a board, which we already had discussion, that there is no belief that that was in intent anyway. So it will not be on the reorganization agenda. Hopefully we'll come back early in the new year with what could be called the best practices so we recognize for, you know, how to have the best possible, most productive production conversations in this room as opposed to elsewhere. Any questions or comments on that? Thank you for your patience. So we'll take five, six, seven, eight, and nine together, Robert. These are annual things. If you want to go through them very quickly and then if there's any particular questions, we can zone in on one of them, but no need to.
I'm recommending to, through consultation with all the department heads, cancel 17 ordinances in general capital for 64,000, four ordinances in water capital of 101,003 ordinances in electric capital of 9,000.
Any questions on that one? All right, next.
This is a standard practice. There are seven old checks outstanding and myself and the chief accountant want to seek permission to cancel all seven of them. They're for small amounts.
All right. Next.
Third item is cancellation of grants receivable in the general capital fund. This is one of the open items from the corrective action plan. There were three grants that were recommended by the auditor to be reviewed for disposition. The first two were canceled. This one required some investigation by the borough engineer with the senior engineer at the New Jersey Department of Transportation. The grant, the project came under budget, therefore the grant receivable $26,000 is just not owed to the borough since it's a reimbursement grant only, and this should be canceled.
All right.
I'd like to reduce the current year purchase power wholesale budget from $13,750,000 to $13,500,000. I would like to currently cancel $250,000. This will have the effect of increasing the surplus generated during 2014 and be fully available to transfer into the 2015 budget.
Okay, any questions? All right, next one.
And lastly, the emergency appropriation that was adopted in 2013 in the amount of $500,000, that will not lapse unless we do take action to cancel it. I fully recommend we cancel $319,000. That will also increase the electric utility surplus in 2014, available for transfer in
Any questions? Pat?
Is there a reason why we didn't cancel this last year? I mean, shouldn't we cancel these every year if we don't use them in the year that they were appropriated?
You can do that.
But I mean, isn't that a best practice? It seems to me like if we thought there was an emergency in 2013 and it didn't occur, we should have canceled it that year.
Well, one of the issues, Pat, on this one was the JCPN L meter issue which we had to resolve. So since that was still hanging out in 2013, we really were not in a position to cancel it. But yeah, normally it would be done in...
Was that the reason we declared an emergency or?
I do not receive the December bill until the month of January of 2014, so I really couldn't take action to cancel it because I didn't know what the final amount would be.
No, no, my question was, was the reason we asked for a half, the council was asked to approve a half a million dollar in an emergency appropriation was because of the issue with the, with the meter or was it for some other reason?
It was because during the summer months of 2013, we were purchasing at a higher rate of kilowatt hours. I thought perhaps we would slightly exceed the budget.
Much different summer than this past one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Okay, so we've got, those are all on the consent agenda. Thank you, Robert. Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, temporary use of space at Hartley Dodge.
I can take that. The museum is currently under construction. There is going to be some sealing work between now and December 31st that may affect the workspace for the existing employees. They've requested courtesy use of one of our conference rooms for employees. If you approve, they would move in here on a temporary, no-fee basis for approximately 25 workdays, 20 to 25 workdays, and then relocate back to the museum in January.
So no issues accommodating them in the building and? Okay. Do we need a resolution for, or?
Just a note.
Just, okay, all right. All right, ordinances for hearing.
Okay. The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on November 24, 2014. It was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up Ordinance 58-2014 for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting an amended redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 48:12A-7.
I open the hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on Ordinance 58-2014, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments three minutes or less.
Tony Beverley Road. Actually here as president of the Madison Arts and Culture Alliance. And I just jotted down a couple of notes. I just wanted to have to read them. Just a brief comment about this ordinance that you're looking to discuss. Obviously, there's really a great deal of excitement around this project and I loved seeing the 3D rendition. I've been looking at, you know, blueprints and things like that. So this was really, really wonderful. So I appreciate that. But I specifically want to communicate to the council, MACA's interest in this endeavor. There's a growing interest from state and county arts councils and advocacy groups about the relationship of arts and culture to communities. This concept is called creative placemaking, which I'm sure you're familiar with. So in essence, what I really want to do is make sure that you understand that MACA is ready and prepared to provide any input, any expertise as it relates to the creation of the presentation performance space that is part of this project and that's been included in these plans. You'll recall last year, MACA was designated the arts group and the creative group for Madison. And so we do have access to lots of different arts organizations and we take this responsibility very seriously. And we really share the desire for this venue to be used as a space that's going to be very useful to everyone in Madison. So I hope that this body will communicate with us the best way that we can be a part of this, very important new asset to our community. So, you know, we're here.
And I've had a conversation with Mr. Powell and he indicated that sooner the better. So I think in the new, early in the new year, we will convene a group which obviously will include MACA and so we can start talking about it. So as they proceed, it is done right.
Right. I mean, even I was noticing in some of your slides, you had some sculpture on the front. I mean, we could, you know, certainly be instrumental in commissioning a sculpture, you know, a piece of work. So those kinds of things. So we thank you.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 58-2014.
I second it.
Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 58-2014 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And we are now on to invitation two of discussion for the public. And now you may comment on anything, not limited to the agenda. Please step forward to lectern, state your name, your address again, and keep your comments two, three minutes or less, please. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And since this is the last meeting of the year, there are no introduction of ordinances. And we move on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion can be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R326-2014.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R326-2014 through R346-2014.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $29,797.19. Health and public assistance, $3,598.78. Public works and engineering, $187,358.3. Community affairs, $7,158.29. Finance and borough clerk, $3,858,599.84. Utilities, $429,384.43. Total is $4,515,876.56.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Only new business is everyone have a great holiday, and we will see you back here on New Year's Day.
And with that, I move, we adjourn.
Long night.
How you doing, Matt?
I'm getting there.
It is warm in here, it's Jackley's fault.
Thanks. I missed the wave for the last few days, but I appreciate it.
Did you get a wonderful...
Yeah. We're in the office here. I'm 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 here.